I already called over to the City Council meeting for City of East Grand Forks for Tuesday, December 4, 2018. It is now six o'clock. Would the City Clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Steve Gander.
Here.
Council President Mark Holstead.
Here.
Council Vice President Chad Grassel.
Here.
Council Members Clarence Better.
Here.
Mike Pachivinsky.
Here.
Tim Riappel.
Here.
Henry Tweeten.
Mark Demers.
Present.
Does the term reforms. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States, O'America, and to the republic for which it stands, what a nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chief, you want to come forward and do the swearing in Officer Mushitz?
Thank you, Mr. President. It's my pleasure to introduce Officer Ethan Mushitz, East Grand Forks native, and graduated from University of Minnesota, Kirkston, finished his skills training this past year, and now he's started a week ago Monday, and he's in his first full week in uniform this week. The first thing we'll do is the law enforcement oath of honor. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. On my honor.
On my honor.
I will never betray my badge.
I will never betray my badge.
My integrity.
My integrity.
My character.
My character.
Or the public trust.
Or the public trust.
I will always have the courage.
I will always have the courage.
To hold myself and others.
To hold myself and others.
Accountable for our actions.
Accountable for our actions.
I will always uphold the Constitution.
I will always uphold the Constitution.
My community.
My community.
And the agency I serve.
And the agency I serve.
Off of the oath of office. Ayes, take your name.
Aye, Ethan Mushitz.
Do solemnly swear that I will.
Do solemnly swear that I will.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of.
The duties of the office of.
Police officer for the City of East Grand Forks.
Police officer of the City of East Grand Forks.
County of Polk, State of Minnesota.
County of Polk, State of Minnesota.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
To the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Congratulations.
An open forum, not turning from members of the public to address the City Council on items not on the current agenda. Items requiring council action may be deferred to staff boards and commissions for research and future council agendas if appropriate. If you'd like to address the City Council on items that are not on the current agenda, please come up to the podium to do so at this time. Also know, we will be holding the public hearing for the levy, so if you want to talk at that time, you can come up at that time regarding that. I see none. Approval minutes for November 13 special meeting, work session, closed session, minute summary, November 20 regular meeting, and November 27 work session. Move by Demers.
Second.
Second by Riappel. Any questions or discussion? See none. Roll call, please.
Better.
Yes.
Pachivinsky.
Yes.
Riappel.
Yes.
Holstead.
Yes.
Grassel.
Yes.
Demers.
Yes.
Motion is carried. Schedule of bid lettings, there's none. Schedule of public hearings. Public hearing for the consideration of 5%, 5.5%, 6% increase to tax levy. Make motion to open the public hearing.
Moved open.
Second.
Moved by Grassel, second by Demers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in the same sign. Public hearing is now open. Mr. Murphy.
Thank you, Council President. Yes, before we take any public comment, I guess I would like to just make a couple of statements. Number one is that the preliminary levy was set at 10%. What we're here tonight is to hear comment and then set the final levy, which would go to the council, excuse me, to the county for adoption. With that, we, from the initial 10% levy, we are looking at, I guess we'll say here from the staff, that we are now looking at a 5.5% is what will be recommended to the council. So there would be a reduction from the preliminary levy. And I guess with that, I will take any comments after the public hearing.
Good. Any members of the, like to come up and address the council this time? If you want to, please come up to the podium, state your name and address, and at that time, we can take any questions you may have. Anybody want to come up and address the council this time?
I guess if not, we did receive one via mail. Typically, then we do read those into the record here as well. So we did receive a letter addressed to the City of East Grand Forks. From Melford and Almeda Johnson, in reference to proposed property tax increase. The letter states, "We have enclosed a copy of the proposed taxes for 2019. We would like to have these taxes lowered on the property. This property does not produce any income and has actually, over the past 25 years, has only produced grass, which is possible, which could be used for hay. Thus, please consider this agricultural hayland with a value of $1,000 per acre. We have tried to be good stewards and pay the property taxes that have been requested over the last 25 years. City of East Grand Forks and the Economic Development Authority have spent no money trying to help us sell or develop this land. We have listed this property with several different realtors over the many years, but have never been given an offer to purchase this land. Until this land is developed, it has no value as commercial property and thus should be assessed as agricultural land. Please do not raise the estimated market value of this land, and please consider lowering the value." Again, we would like to state that the City of East Grand Forks and the Economic Development Authority apparently see no value in this land because they have not shown any interest in trying to promote development on this land. Please lower the value to estimated market value of $1,000 per acre. At approximately four acres of land, a farmland is valued as hayland worth $4,000. Thank you, Melford and Almeda Johnson.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Gander.
And since that one really came to a question of valuation, that would be more for another day?
Correct.
Because here we are to talk about the levy. And so, any questions of valuation were outlined on the sheet that we would have gotten.
That is correct.
Mr. Murphy, yes?
Thank you, Mr. President. I was just going to ask if, when we, not foreseeing an avalanche of those type of letters, but when we do get those, would staff be able to reach out to those individuals and let them know?
Yes.
That this is not the form for that?
Yes, we can. Typically, we do respond to that.
I could see if we got 150 of them that said that same thing about valuations, but since we're getting one or two.
This is the only one we're aware of.
Okay. Is there anybody like to come up and address the council this time? See none? Is there one? Come forth, state your name and your address, please.
Enrique Gutierrez, 706 12th Street Northwest. I just have a question. I don't, I don't know what we're talking about. I don't understand what's going on as far as, all I remember seeing was on the computer something about a levy increase or something. And I don't have any idea where to go to read up on the information or why we're raising taxes. Is that what it is?
Maybe you'll cover that.
Yeah, I can go with it. But hearing for, what's, the hearing is for tonight is each year, the City of East Grand Forks has to certify what amount we're going to levy from the properties in the form of property tax throughout the city. And if there is an increase in that number from the previous year, we have to hold a public hearing for that. This year, we are looking at increasing, like I said, the preliminary levy was set at 10% more than what was collected last year. What we're doing tonight is getting any information from the public as far as what, if that amount is reasonable, and if not, what we should set it to be. We, as a staff, are looking at requesting that that amount be lowered from 10% to 5.5% increase over last year. So what this would be is sets how much property taxes needs, how much property tax needs to be raised from the city as a whole. So if you own property here in the City of East Grand Forks, then your portion would go up to a certain degree based on your valuation, your home sec credits, those type of things. So what we're talking about tonight is how much to raise the city portion of the property tax on your, on your property.
Okay. And the increase is for, for what?
The increase is to, the majority of the increase this year is for, well, there's a couple of things. Number one, the amount of money that we get from the state, which is called local government aid, that has gone down by $80,000. So we're getting $80,000 less in 2019 than we did in 2018. And the other, our cost of doing business goes up, our labor costs go up, our insurance costs go up, our fuel costs go up. But the major one is labor. The majority of our budget is labor, so it's to pay for our labor costs that increase every year.
When you say labor, do you mean like the City of East Grand Forks workers and, or?
The city workers, the people that work for the City of East Grand Forks.
Okay.
Yep. So the cost that we pay our people that, that work here for the city goes up.
I just wanted to know what it was for and stuff, so, all right.
Okay. But if you want, if you, if you stick around after, if you give me, you can give me your, your property address or your number, I can go through that with you, too. Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is anybody else at this time like to come and address the council?
Move it close to publicly.
Move by Pachivinsky to close the meeting.
Second.
Second by Demers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in the same sign. Motion is carried. The public hearing is now closed. Move on to consent agenda. Items under the consent agenda will be adopted in one motion. Whoever council members may request individual items to be polled from the consent agenda for discussion in action they choose. Any council member like seven through 10 polled at all? If not, entertain a motion for seven through 10, please.
Move seven through 10.
Moved by Demers. Second by Riappel. Any questions or discussion? See none. Roll call, please.
Better.
Yeah.
Pachivinsky.
Yes.
Riappel.
Yes.
Holstead.
Yes.
Grassel.
Yes.
Demers.
Yes.
Motion is carried. Knowledge of receipts of reports of officer boards and commissions, there's none. Communication, there's none. Old business, there's none. New business, consider adopt in resolution number 18-12-77, approving the percent increase for 2018 tax levy.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yeah, I'll take that. I guess I'll take any questions from the council, but I guess what I will say is things that have changed from the last, last time we met, we will be discussing a little bit later in the evening, but it appears that our, the amount that we are going to be paying for labor is not as high as we made provisions for in the 2019 budget. So with that, we were able to reduce a portion of the levy. So I guess with that, we, I guess I am recommending that we go with the 5.5% increase over last year. That will allow us to maintain everything that we had currently, that we had in the budget that we discussed at the last meeting, meaning the additional Parks and Rec position, et cetera. And that would leave us with approximately 100 and some odd dollars balance over last year. So we would not be dipping into the fund balance, and we'd be maintaining where we're at. So I guess with that, I'll take any questions, but that is my recommendation as administrator.
First of all, do is take a motion on.
I'll move that we increase our levy by 5.5% over the 2018, for the 2018 budget.
I'll second that.
Moved by Pachivinsky at 5.5% and second by Mr. Grassel. Questions, discussion? Mr. Demers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Murphy, you said at the work session that you would have a administrator recommendation for how that last five, or half a percent would be accomplished?
Meaning if we're going from 5%, 5.5% to 5%? Yes. At this point, where I would recommend that that come is we would reduce the increase in the library budget.
So that would, you would, you would reduce the increase in the library budget, but the staff, the additional staff for Park and Rec would remain in?
Yes, that would be my recommendation. And basically, it's because I do feel that that position is needed.
What was the reduction that you need to come out of the libraries budget?
Well, to go from 5.5% to 5% would be roughly $24,000. I just used the number of $25,000.
Which ended up, which is, which cost, what's the, what's the direct impact of that $24,000 loss?
To decrease the proposed budget for $24,000 to $25,000 next year would be, the options the library board has considered is eliminating one part-time position that's 20 to 25 hours right now a week, or decreasing a full-time position by eight hours, making it a 32-hour position, eliminating one.
Would that person still have benefits or no?
They would have pro-rated.
Okay. Sorry to interrupt. I just want to catch up.
Nope. No, the other options that the library board has considered, and we're talking about options to put together, not all of them across the board, is closing hours, which would be to begin with one morning, one evening, one weekend day, possibly not opening until 10:00 AM each morning.
And the 20, keeping the $24,000 in would basically keep things status quo?
Well, we have a decrease to make it to the 5.5.
Right.
We've done that, so that, it's not quite status quo.
It's deeper than the source.
Right, right. So we are, we are cutting back on training, on traveling. We're cutting back on certain kind of matches that we do to make the programs run that don't have the grants anymore, that originally started that way. We are, that's what I'm coming up with right now.
Okay, thank you. I just, I want to know what we're, what we're trading off if we get to certain percentages. So I appreciate it.
Right.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Murphy?
Yes. So what is the budgeted amount for the additional staff person for Park and Rec?
We have in the budget $62,092.
That's everything, benefits area?
Yes, that's our estimate. However, we have to send it into Spring, Springstead or Downs for where it would place, but that was our, that's our best guess.
So if you ended up keeping the library budget where it was to get to 5.5% without that extra 24K, and didn't hire this person, we'd actually be at about a 4.5%?
And we did increase revenue in parks to try to cover that position. So the parks did increase their fees by 40 grand.
Right, but, but part of the justification for that was we were, we've been under, under feeing. It wasn't, oh, we need to pay for this, this is what we're going to do.
Correct.
I mean, it could have been a logical thing to say, well, we're going to add this so we don't have to, but.
Correct.
Part of the sale was, we've been under charging for a while, so we've been subsidizing to a greater extent. I guess, I can't vote right now to add positions. I guess I'm not going to vote for 5.5% because I don't think that's what people want. I don't think they want to pay that much more for that position. I don't think the, the position has been thought out enough, and this is, that it can be of a maximum benefit to the entire city. I think that it could have been presented as a, as office position. I think obviously, or I think at $60,000, you could take two years and renovate the city hall, and you wouldn't have to have that position. So at $125,000, $130,000, you could do some renovations to city hall, and you wouldn't have that ongoing expense. I just don't think that this is the time that we should be adding staff, which drives our budget up. So I won't vote for 5.5.
Mr. Pachivinsky. Mr. Riappel. Mr. Better.
Thank you. I don't doubt that the Park District needs additional staff there. There's been a number of times when I've come into the city hall and the Park District office is closed, and if the public's coming in, there's no one there to help them, and that concerns me. However, when Mrs. Haddon retired, the council did have a plan to help out the Park District, and the city staff just never implemented that plan. So until that plan is implemented and tried, I'm not going to vote for an additional person in the Park District either.
Mayor Gander.
I hope, I think we all appreciate how many moving parts there are when you put together a budget like this. How many little, small streams of revenue, and how many little expenses and some much larger ones? And how do you put together all of those moving parts to bring it down to, right here in this moment, we're talking about 5 or 5.5%? So I want to say thank you to our financial staff, Carla, you as our financial director, Mr. Murphy, you as the city administrator, and the work that you guys have done to bring us to this point. I feel that this is extremely productive, especially considering, again, the roughly 2% loss of local government aid. So we're really getting down closer to 3 or 3.5% increase, which is great. I mean, you all have trimmed expenses everywhere that we possibly can. I do like the discussion. I want to just see how it plays out as for if we find savings in one of those two areas, we bring it to 5. And if we don't, then we're able to put it at the 5.5, and I'd like to hear the rest of the conversation. It's all important. And to be honest, it's not cut and dried. Like, for example, we look at our Parks and Rec, and one of the justifications, we're raising the fees to the people that utilize our Park and Rec programs, and the thought being, we can serve them better by filling that position, so they get a greater bang for the buck. And, and don't forget that Parks and Rec oversees our senior center, oversees our cemetery, and in that way, it does really serve the whole continuum of our people, all the way from the very youngest until we pass on, and how well we maintain that cemetery, and that all falls under Park and Rec. So I'm, I'm going to say this one is not cut and dried in my mind, as to whether we should bring in that position. And then, as for the, the discussion of the library and the increase, I think we're looking at an annual increase still for the library, close to $60,000, and it would be maybe trimmed back a bit from there to, to bring it closer. So again, I just say thank you for the way that you've shuffled and moved and fit this together like a tight little puzzle, and I appreciate this moment right here where we are. We're very, very close. So I'd like to hear the rest of the conversation.
Does anybody have any comments or questions?
Key Council President, just a couple of comments. I'd just like to reiterate to all of you the importance that I feel that position has for our department. And we've discussed it at length in a few work sessions. In going to the Parks and Recreation Commission to that level and the conversations about the, the level of fee increase, one of the reasons, to Demers, Mr. Demers' point, we haven't raised it in a few years, but the big reason that we looked at a fee increase to the level that we did was really to try to provide an extra boost to show what we feel is the importance. And when I say we, I mean our department, the Parks and Recreation Department, as well as that commission, that, that we feel as a group is important to how we want to see the department move forward. Going all the way back to, to the time that I started here, again, we've talked a bunch internally in our department, as well as at the council level, about additional programming. And, and really, I feel like that is, if we're going to add additional programming of different avenues for our residents, the only way to accomplish that at this point is to be able to have another person that can, one, take some of the administrative duties off of my plate. For example, things as simple as adding up time sheets for the 80 to 128, 20 part-time employees we have, depending upon the season, to working on paying bills, to filing the deeds for the cemetery. I mean, things like that, that's a percentage of it, as well as getting out into the community and helping put, put together more programs, and really just helping fill a hole that we have in our department right now. And you can see, there's a visible hole, to Mr. Vetter's point, when you come into our office, there's, there's a lot of, today, it was, there were two and a half hours that the window was closed today, because Mark was out working on some hockey stuff in one arena, and I got called to the swimming pool to deal with the project that we have on the pump going on there, and it was two and a half hours that the window was closed. That, that happens on a fairly regular basis. So there's up, an importance in my eyes, in a number of different ways, why that position is important. One is the window, one is the administrative side of it. The biggest one that I think we can provide the most benefit to our residents is in the programming side. If we can get another person in that can be a skilled, energetic person in that way, it'll open me up, hopefully, to do more of the programming that I discussed with all of you when I was interviewing for this position. And two, that person will be able to bring a new niche that we haven't been able to have through the skills that they're going to have. So I just, I can't say enough how important that I think it is for our department, as well as how important our department feels it is, and I hope that you'll support it.
Pachivinsky.
Thank you. I spoke at length about this position at the work session last week, and I haven't changed my thinking on it at all. It's inexcusable to have a Park and Rec department where the customers come up and the, the windows closed, because we don't have a position to staff that, that window. Mr. Hutten just described what, what type of work has to get done during, during a typical day. Management isn't, isn't supposed to be doing that stuff. I agree that we haven't fulfilled our obligation to restructure and figure out a way to, to give the additional help to Park and Rec through, through creative efficiencies, but that doesn't, that doesn't mean we can't start on that after, but after we get this position in place, there, there will be opportunities through attrition to, to do it the right way when the time comes. And I just want to make a comment about the two departments we are talking about cutting. There are quality of life departments, the library and Park and Rec. We, we have an excellent library, and we could, and all you have to do is look across the river and figure out what happens when you don't run a library the way it should be done. So to, to cut hours or cut staff from the library that, that we have, I think would be a huge mistake, and I think your phones would start ringing if you, if you decided to do that. Park and Rec is another discretionary budget that, that does add to the quality of life. And we've made huge strides in the last couple of years through turning that department around and offering the kind of service that our people expect. And I would predict that with that additional staff, with the additional revenue that we bring in from fees, we're going to surpass our estimates for, for the revenue that Park and Rec brings in, because we will elevate the level of service that we have. And I think through some marketing and, and smart management, that, that we can do exactly that, and will, like we did this year, maybe have some cash carryover into, into next year's budget. So I'm going to vote for 5.5%. I'll vote no on anything less.
Mr. Murphy. Thank you, Council President. Because one thing I'd like to say is I, I'd like to apologize to Council Member Vetter because I did, I should have, I apparently didn't communicate this as well as I should have, as far as the reason why we're looking at a position like this, that, other than what, I guess, rather than what was brought forward in the study that we had done on that. You know, when we, when we had that study done, we had the recommendation, we're looking at trying to fill more of the administrative, or the, I guess, the administration portion of it, where they'd be doing more of the clerical, answering the phones, those type of things. In discussions with Mr. Hutten and some of the others, looking at where we'd like to see the Parks and Rec department go, this position would need to be more than that. It would, it would need to be more than somebody that would be shared from, say, like the Public Works Department or Senior Center, some of the other ideas that we'd brought forward, just the fact that we would need something more than just answering the phone, particularly with the idea of us trying to elevate the level of service that we do give for the, for the Parks and Rec. You know, there was a lot of discussion about trying to elevate the, the level to more than, than athletic department, more, trying to get more outside of athletics, keep the level of athletics that we have, increase it as well, but also move to non-athletic endeavors that we could do. So I guess with that, I agree with, with Reed there, that the, the needs in the skillset that we would. in the skill set that we would need for that, it would be something more than what we would have, say, shared with another position, or just trying to keep the phones answered. So I guess I understand where that happened. I believe that the needs have changed since that time. So that is all I have.
Mr. Grassel.
We go back and we look at the history of our budget since I've been on the council, and prior to me getting on the council, we went negative one, we went three, we went three, I want to believe it was 25, 28, something to that effect. I mean, it was crazy numbers because, again, we were trying to cut way back and way back, and the negative one was the killer for us. And then we went three because there was, and there was vetoes, and there was all of those pieces involved, and overriding vetoes and having that argument. I can't agree more with what Mr. Pachivinsky said, and the mayors have said about the two departments that we're talking about. We just can't, I think we've got ourselves in a pretty good spot where our fund balance is good, we've sharpened enough pencils and we've pushed enough things around. I think it's a slap in the face to our people, our department heads that have worked to get us to where they're at now. And I too will not vote for anything less than the five and a half.
One thing I'd like to, you know, I'm glad Mr. Murphy brought it up. I did talk to him about the Senior Center. I know Reed worked on that project, looking at them helping out in the Park and Rec department, answering phones and doing whatever. I know we went through that process of looking at it and saying, okay, can this be a possibility? And of course, walking through it, and the demands that would be put on that person, it would not work. And I appreciate him going through that process and looking at all these options. And I know he's looked at these. One thing I don't want to see is these programs or these departments, you know, to be hurt any more than they are. I mean, Mr. Reed and Mark have done a great job in the Park and Rec department, and I applaud Reed on what he's accomplished so far in, you know, getting things back on track where we want to see things in the city for our citizens, for our quality of life, as people have said before. It is an area where he wants to do more, like Mr. Murphy said, more than athletics. It's working with Altru and our agreement with them of wellness for the city and all these things we can do. And that goes, like the mayor said, from young age up to our seniors with the Senior Center that Altru works with, and Reed has been doing, and I applaud him for that. I myself won't go anything. I like the five and a half. I did not, I know they've worked on it and worked on it, and I appreciate the department as of what they've done. And I know that we sat down in meetings and talked about it, you know, and the mayors gave some feedback with Mr. Murphy, and I think them doing that, getting to this point, and his recommendation is where we need to be. Mr. Murphy.
Thank you. I guess, just a quick rebuttal. I hope that, I agree, I think we've, everybody from, you know, staff to the council to, you know, the mayor's office has done a lot, not just this year, but over the course of many years, to try get this budget where it is today. And I hope that no department head, no staff member, no other council member looks at it as a slap in the face to suggest a point of view about where we should be. I guess my, I just want to clarify what my point is, is that to the mayor's, you know, vision, I don't want to put words in your, but your vision that you've stated is that we want to try to stay just slightly above or at what the cost of living or the inflation is. And I agree that that's a goal. Like you said, there's lots of factors that go into that. The problem I have with it is the biggest portion of our budget, year in, year out, is wages and benefits, and that portion compounds every year. So if we're, and I don't want to, I was going to say serious, I think we're all serious about this, but if we're going to be honest about the impacts, not just for this year, and how easy it will be to budget next year and the budget next year, the hardest thing for us to do, or maybe the most detrimental, is to add to that wages and benefits, because it grows by 7% or whatever it ends up being every year based on health insurance or whatever. And we've been very lucky because our staff has come in and been very helpful, agreeable, about coming in at modest increases. Our health insurance in the last couple of years has come in, and it's been very, very low. So we've had, we've seen little impacts in those in the last few years. Those two variables, among others, can change very rapidly. And that's, in the out years, those are the impacts that I fear, is it makes, yes, we can get to five and a half or five, and really that, we look at that number and it's $25,000. It's not, in the budget of East Grand Forks, it's not this crazy number, we're going to spend $80,000 tonight on stuff that we've kind of beat each other up about at the last meeting. So it's not about the money today, but it's about the money next year and the year after. That's why I oppose adding a position, because without doing anything next year, we've already increased it even more. So, like I said, I understand the need or the want for those positions. I just, we're going to be talking about another position that's basically being added later. We talk about being fiscally constrained, and we're doing the thing that impacts our budgets the most, pretty, or I guess, by doing these two things. I just, that's my fear. Like you said, I've talked to Reed probably as much as anybody about ways I think we could expand, and ideas. And yes, you need people to do that, but we're in pretty good economic times right now. In a couple of years, we could be facing some different scenarios. So, like I said, I don't find anything completely wrong with the number, 5% versus five. It's just, I don't like the process that we, or the thing that's included in that 5%, 5 and a half percent. So, like I said, if you didn't have that position and didn't change anything other than what the library is already cutting, you'd have a 4 and a half percent increase. So, like I said, I just, and that's the other thing, is you can add services with this other person, and if we're going to do that, then who's going to be watching the window when you have that person gone? I just think this whole thing about, and the administrative side of it, should be dealt with administratively and citywide, like Mr. Vedder explained. We talked about ways that we should address that. You don't, you shouldn't address the options of communications with your constituents and people that want to use those services by just adding people. I think you become more efficient in how you deliver those. I agree, you know, Mr. Pachivinsky said, you don't want to go to the touch, press one for whatever. I don't either. But you go to, when Altru, you know, renovated their clinic, they went from, you know, points of contact within that clinic everywhere. You know, when you went to your doctor, you went and signed in at that one, then they said, wait a second, why are we doing this? Why don't we just move it all to one level, one person, or one floor, and you have five or six there instead of going everywhere? And that's my point, is to get out of that side of the administrative side of it, I think we could be smarter. Now, if we're talking about actual addition of services, then I think that's a different discussion. But thank you.
Mr. Grassel.
Sorry about that rebuttal. I'm going to go back to the, back to the year that we had, and I threw out 25, 28, and I'm probably way off, but I believe I made three motions in one night to cut four positions to get us to where we needed to be. And I didn't get a second. And then I went from four positions to three positions, and I didn't get a second. We needed to make a move and we couldn't get it. So when we as a, we as a council know what our people want in our city, and I don't believe they would stand for us to be subpar. I just don't believe that's the way people believe the way our city runs in East Grand Forks. So, I mean, and I get what you're saying, Mr. Demers, but I just truly don't believe that, if that was the case, there'd be more than five new faces sitting in this crowd than there were, than there are tonight than what we've seen in the past. And they might be yelling and screaming. That doesn't mean I'm not going to get out of here without one of these five people yelling at me, but that, that's what it is. So, that, I mean, I can...
And like I said, I don't, I'm not, the five, five and a half, six even, isn't way out of line. My point is, just to take your point exactly, is when it comes time to cut, those positions don't go away. Like Mr. Pachivinsky said, the only way you're going to cut it is through attrition, and that's the only way we've done it. So it's, we should very carefully, and I'm not saying that nobody in here hasn't thought about this or isn't going into this with a lot of foresight or forethought, but these are the type of positions that cost us the most, or not this, not the type of positions, this is the type of expenditure that costs us the most and are the least likely to get rolled back. And that's all, I mean, I'm just trying to be the word of caution going forward into the out years, that as we add positions, that's the hardest thing to cut.
Mr. Pachivinsky.
Thank you. One more quick rebuttal to your rebuttal. Mr. Demers talks about adding a position when in fact, correct me if I'm wrong, we're filling a vacancy that's been vacant for a couple of years. Isn't that right? Okay. So, we aren't really adding a position. We left that position vacant, and the consequences are, people walk to Park and Rec and nobody's home. So, just a tiny little correction to, maybe it's semantics, but we aren't, we, yes, we're adding a position, but we're adding a position that we used to have, and the service has suffered. And if we're asking our Park and Rec department to provide excellent service, we have to give them at least enough staff to do that. So, that's the end of my rebuttal.
Mr. Riepel.
Adding to your rebuttal, that position will also possibly be cost-saving in other areas, that that individual, the job description is a lot broader than what we had before, correct? So they'll be able to fill in at other locations where we might have had to hire a part-time employee to cover that position. So there'll be some savings.
Then they won't be in the office.
Right, but the other two, one of the other two will be in the office.
Vedder.
Thank you. I agree with Mr. Grassel. I think our citizens want us to be staffed at a level that is providing an ultimate service. But at the same time, time and time again, I get approached and asked, how many breaks do our employees get, and why are they always sitting at Luigi's, or why are they always at Holiday? And I wish I'd get that many breaks. So our responsibility is to make sure that we are efficient with our employees. And I don't think that hiring another staff without trying to combine positions that maybe don't have enough job duties to fulfill a whole eight-hour day that do have some slack time. I think it's our responsibility to combine those positions and look at other alternatives rather than just hiring one person. If we combine positions and alleviate some of the administration that the current park district staff is doing, that frees their time up then to do the programming. And so again, I can't support adding another position without trying other things first.
Mr. Ganer.
In one of our early conversations between Mr. Olsted, Mr. Murphy, myself, we considered what had already been talked about, and that is sharing staff coverage with Parks and Rec from Public Works. When that got to Mr. Storedall, our Public Works Superintendent, he came beelining it, and he's a pretty mellow fellow, but he kind of came unhinged just a little bit and said, I'd like you to come out and see what this person does right now. I would like you to see how the minutes are filled and how we're getting a little more behind every day, even fully utilizing her services. And so we did try to find other ways to pull staff into Parks and Rec from other departments that we thought maybe were slightly underutilized, but frankly, from an administrative standpoint, in terms of generating the proper invoices and everything that are needed for people on like maintenance of vehicles, they're having a Dickens of a time keeping up. We really have tried to rack our brains to say, how do we pull administrative assistant-type staff and even the park planning-type services that we're looking for? And up to this point, we haven't found it. I mean, we've beat the bush trying to find people hours to pull in from all over, and we just have not found it. We'll keep looking. And I'm open to any discussion out into the future of some additional outsourcing, some things that we don't maybe do as efficiently as we could, or don't do them often. So there's a continuous relearning that has to happen. That could be somebody's front office work as if we outsourced to them, somebody who does that all the time, whatever that might be. And of course, we're continuously trying to work through a process of streamlining everything we do. We're looking at a book right now that talks about that very thing. How do we streamline our processes, take out any unnecessary steps to get from start to finish as efficiently as we can? And it might be technology, it might be some additional tools or training that we need, but we're looking at all of those things to give the best service to folks that we can for the dollar.
Do we also have any questions or comments?
Vedder?
No.
Pachivinsky?
Yes.
Riepel?
Yes.
Olsted?
Yes.
Grassel?
Yes.
Demers?
No.
Motion is carried. Number 12, consider adoption resolution number 18-12-78 approving the 2019 budget and to authorize specific financial-related activities.
No.
Move by Grassel.
Second.
Second by Riepel. Any questions or discussion? Send in a roll call, please.
Vedder?
No.
Pachivinsky?
Yes.
Riepel?
Yes.
Olsted?
Yes.
Grassel?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Number 13, consider approving agreement between the City of East Grand Forks and Ann Carlson Center, allowing Ann Carlson Center for use of the VFW arena for the Icon Bike Camp event that will be taking place from July 15th through the 19th, with the city waiving the rental fee for this event. Is there a motion? Demers' motion.
Second.
Second by Grassel. Any questions or discussion? Send in a roll call, please.
Vedder?
Yes.
Pachivinsky?
Yes.
Riepel?
Yes.
Olsted?
Yes.
Grassel?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Number 14, consider proving, what was it? Consider proving the purchase of 2011 Polaris Ranger from Revolution Spa for a total of $5,134 for the Parks and Rec department.
Move.
Move by Grassel.
Second.
Second by Demers. Any questions or discussion?
Vedder?
Yes.
Pachivinsky?
Yes.
Riepel?
Yes.
Tweeten? Olsted?
Yes.
Grassel?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Number 15, consider adoption resolution number 18-12-79 updating the fee schedule for the Park and Rec department, which will take effect in 2019. Move. By Riepel, second by Pachivinsky. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Vedder?
Yes.
Pachivinsky?
Yes.
Riepel?
Yes.
Tweeten? Olsted?
Yes.
Grassel?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Number 16, consider proving the purchase of the 2019 Chevrolet Suburban from Rydell Chevrolet for a total of $43,363, along with outfitting the vehicle and striping the vehicle, for $9,635, for a total project not to exceed $52,998 for the fire department.
Move.
Move by Riepel.
Second.
Second by Pachivinsky. Any questions or discussion? Send in a roll call, please. Vetter?
Yes.
Pachivinsky?
Yes.
Riepel?
Yes.
Tweeten?
Yes.
Olsted?
Yes.
Grassel?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Number 17, consider approving the purchase of a Stalker MC360 message trailer from the Stalker Radar for a total of $15,498 to be utilized by both the police department and the public works department.
Move.
No by Grassel.
Second.
Second by Demers. Any questions or discussion? Roll call please. Vetter?
Yes.
Pachivinsky?
Yes.
Riepel?
Yes.
Tweeten?
Yes.
Olsted?
Yes.
Grassel?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Number 18, consider adopting the memorandum of understanding between the city of East Grand Forks and the law enforcement labor services, local number 152, establishing the position of corporal and approve the promotional process of filling the corporal positions. Is there a motion?
Move.
No by Grassel.
Second.
Second by Riepel. Questions or discussion? Mr. Vetter.
Are these costs already in the budget that we just approved also?
That is correct.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Mr. Demers?
Thank you. That's putting the cart before the horse. We could have cut another 15, I'm just saying, I mean, we could have cut another 15,000, 20,000 before we...
Seven.
Seven. Well, that's if you use four of the most junior officers without any overtime and don't expand it.
It's the most senior officers, actually.
Or the most senior, yes, but, so, is there an urgency on this?
To be perfectly honest, yes. Um, there's a, a number of reasons that we would like to have the position put in, the corporal position put into place. Senior officers are not necessarily the most qualified officers. Currently, the senior officer that takes the place for the sergeant, when the sergeant is not there for whatever reason, is automatically charged as based purely on seniority. Just because you're the most senior officer doesn't mean you're the most qualified person for that position. And I guess without going into tremendous detail in a, in a public forum, it's, it's my opinion that we are, are better off going through a corporal process and having officers that are designated through, through promotional process to be in that position of, of rank where they would be the acting, acting sergeant. It's, because I'm trying to be careful with my words, but it just, it's, uh, I just think the overall good of the department, we're, we're better off with the corporal position than we are without the corporal position.
Is, I, I was going to look through my contract, but is there specific contract language that states that it has to be, that that position has to be appointed by the most senior?
That was the original contract language. Council did pass an MOU this past summer that allows me to designate a junior officer above that senior officer. So, we do have a mechanism in place. Um, but it's my opinion that that's a rather, it's a kind of an antiquated way of, of taking care of the situation. Does it work? Yes. But I don't think it's in the best interest of our employees. Um, for example, if you're that senior officer and I'm now telling you that a junior officer is going to be in that position of seniority over you, uh, it could be almost viewed as degrading towards that officer, whereas if we have a promotional process, everybody's going to do it, everybody that meets whatever the qualification standards are, is going to do it with a, a fair chance to try to get that position.
But they'll still be a, potentially a junior officer, right?
Potentially, yes.
So, won't that be degrading?
Not necessarily. It's kind of the same situation with, with sergeant. Um, if just be, a person does not automatically get promoted to sergeant just because they're the most senior officer. In fact, we've had a number of occasions where a junior officer was promoted to sergeant over people that were more senior to them. Um, you're trying to put the person that's most qualified for the position into the position rather than just purely by seniority. As I said, we have to some degree taken care of that, but I just, I think from personal relationships, personal standpoint, uh, as far as trying to do the right thing for our employees, I, I personally feel this is, this is better.
So, um, is there additional duties assigned to corporal that wouldn't be in just a, in just patrol officer?
Well, patrol officer in general, yes.
Besides the opportunity to be an supervisor?
Yes. Uh, that's, that's first and foremost. If the sergeant's not there, they are the acting sergeant. We also have, uh, DMT is the alcohol breath testing device that we have. Uh, it's, it's ongoing training that needs to be done. We have, what our historic practice has been, the, the senior, excuse me, the sergeant and the senior officer on each shift is trained in that. The junior officers on the shift are not. So, that's one additional responsibility for that person. There's also through the Minnesota Criminal Justice Data Network, there's certain, uh, data that we do have to enter, that you have to have specific clearances by the state to do. Uh, that senior officer has also typically been, been trained in that towards the junior officers or not. So, we would always have someone on duty, either that sergeant or that senior officer, that would be eligible and able to, to...
But the only time you would have to do that is if you're out of rank, right? Like if, if that person, like you wouldn't do that, that corporal wouldn't necessarily do that on a daily basis. That would be the sergeant's duties?
The sergeant could ask them to do it, but yes.
Is, I know we talked about this before, is, did we have this pointed?
It has not been, no.
So, we don't know if it, even those few changes would, I mean, it could be the same grade?
Possible, yes. Um, I guess we, we made the assumption since patrol officers are now under the new wage study are going to be a grade 15 and sergeants are 17, we made the assumption again, which we don't know for sure, we had the assumption that would fall into a grade 16.
I guess it seems to me that we're, we're kind of throwing money at the, at the problem. It's, you know, in order for someone not to feel awkward, we're willing to pay more to just pacify some people, um, for not really additional duties.
It's more detailed on that, but as I mentioned, I, I did, I have had private discussions with the majority of the council members, so I was able to explain those situations that I, I would rather not do in a public forum. Um, unfortunately, I wasn't able to do that with you.
I, I don't see the, the need, because I guess it's kind of the same thing if that are in another position. Are we going to be asked to do, you know, a lieutenant colonel next time? Or are we gonna, you know, I, I, where does it end? You know, I mean, if that, if that sergeant is, is out and then the other officer goes home sick, is who's the third in charge? You know, I mean, I don't know. At some point, I just think management needs to make a decision and stick by it and, you know, I don't know. To me, it seems like we're throwing money at the problem and not really, and it's not, I understand what you're saying, but I don't think that's the remedy.
Mr. President?
Mayor Gander.
Uh, the chief's doing a good job. As far as I'm concerned, I'd like to move this on, get it over with.
Mayor Gander.
Um, I'd like to just say a couple of things. First of all, to the fact that chief is before us now, he's here as a show of good faith. He and I visited about this in the last week or two weeks, and he reminded me that we had the conversation about this last summer. It found its way into the budget. I said, "I think the council members would feel like you're being a little sneaky if you don't bring it out one more time by year end to make sure everybody knows, A, it's in the budget, B, this is the rationale for doing it." And he's like, "Are you sure?" And I said, "I think as a show of good faith and, and real full disclosure, it'd be good to have the conversation one more time." So, the fact that chief is here now was by our mutual agreement as, as to say, "I want to be as open and, and as candid with the council as I can possibly be at, at this time, in the same stroke as we approved the budget." That's in there, and he wanted us all to be aware of it, to have that conversation one more time, thumbs up, thumbs down. Um, the way that it is now, can you imagine if, if you are that officer who doesn't really even know, you show up for a shift and you don't even know for sure if you're the one or not, who's going to be in the, in the helm right there on that night? And by having this position, those people will know day in, day out, they're the next in command if that top one is not there to do it. Um, number two benefit is, it really does create a framework whereby the most qualified officers are allowed to do this and, and provide this service. It's kind of a grooming perhaps for that next level up, and it's a reward for them. It might be good for retention of younger officers to say, "Look, you've stepped up, you've done the extraordinary service, you actually are more qualified after two or three or four years maybe than someone who's been here," more than that. And it's a decision you'd make for that time and it would carry forward. You wouldn't have to do it willy-nilly, on the fly. It would just be a, a more solid way. So, chief has convinced me that this is a good, a good use of our dollars to create that framework where these individuals know what's expected of them, they do get the additional training. And, um, so he's convinced me that this is a, a reasonable step for those various reasons.
Thank you. Do we also have anything at this time? See none? Roll call. Vetter?
Yes.
Pachivinsky?
Yes.
Riepel?
Yes.
Tweeten?
Yes.
Olsted?
Yes.
Grassel?
Yes.
Demers?
No.
Motion is carried. Number 19, consider authorizing the city administrative clerk treasurer to issue payment of revenue bills and payroll.
Move.
No by Demers. Second by Riepel. Mr. Vetter.
Thank you. I apologize I didn't get the answer to this earlier. I looked at it over the weekend and I made a mental note and then it flew away. Um, we gotta check in here for the petty cash for $12,642 and change. Tell me we don't have a petty cash account for $15,000 sitting around somewhere.
No, we paid the election judges out of the petty cash account instead of running it through payroll, because most of them...
Well, how big is our petty cash fund?
It is typically $2,500. We moved money in to pay them, and then it's being reimbursed with the election account and it'll be pulled back down to that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? No. Roll call please. Vetter?
Yes.
Pachivinsky?
Yes.
Riepel?
Yes.
Tweeten?
Yes.
Olsted?
Yes.
Grassel?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Mayor Gander.
On the 15th, that's a Saturday, we're going to go head-to-head, Mayor Brown and I, in two different locations, ringing the bell for the Salvation Army. And so, there'll be a little bit of a contest and hopefully that we'll have some fun with that. I made sure that the Salvation Army put me at one of their highest grossing buckets. I mean, I love Mayor Brown, I love Grand Forks, but we do compete on various things and we enjoy that a lot. So, that's happening. I'll be at Cabela's from 11:30 to 1:30 on the 15th. Coming up on the 18th, in the afternoon, from 3:00 to 5:00, right, Megan? 3:00 to 5:00, we will have an opportunity to say goodbye to two of our fine colleagues that have been here a long time. One has a chance to come back in a few years perhaps, but council members, Pachivinsky and Tweeten, will be leaving us from the council, as you know, at year end. And so, there'll be an open house on the 18th. We'll be putting it on the website and other ways of promoting that on the 18th from 3:00 to 5:00 here at City Hall. It's open to the whole community. Come on over, swap some stories, enjoy some refreshments. Hope to see you there.
Vetter.
I don't have anything, thank you.
Mr. Pachivinsky.
I'm delighted to hear that Mr. Tweeten is considering coming back in a few years.
(Laughter).
This is Riepel.
Uh, I had the opportunity this past weekend to go to the One Minnesota Tour of Governor-Elect Tim Walz over in Kirkston. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mickleseth, for showing up and representing East Grand Forks with me. Uh, he spoke about LGA funding, he's in favor of it, of an increase. We just have to get our mayor down there to testify so we can get our formula squared away. Uh, the op, uh, drug epidemic we have, uh, he supports that. He says we're bleeding, he supports the funding for it, puts that way, more funding, because we're, we're bleeding in the city. And, uh, no set plan on how he's going to do that, though. He spoke of the immigration, where he feels a great injustice has been done by certain organizations bringing over the immigrants and setting them up to fail. They drop them off in six months and say, "Okay, it's up to you guys, take care of them." Uh, he said he's going to try to address that with the federal government and go from there. His work is cut out because Minnesota is the only state in this country right now that has a House represented by one party and a Senate represented by another. The rest are all by one party. So, I say good luck to him on that one. As he was leaving, we shook hands. I told him, uh, "Remember East Grand Forks?" Told Mr. Olsted, he said, "I was there for 15 months with the National Guard back in the flood days. He was here." Um, the grade I gave to him was cautiously optimistic. Now, there's a political term for you. So, you heard something out of me. Keel, Deb Keel was there, Mark Johnson spoke with them. Uh, "They're going to work for us," is what they told me, so. And then I just want to say goodbye to number 41, President Bush, uh, tomorrow is laid to rest. Thank you.
Mr. Tweeten.
I'd like to make a comment. Uh, if he was in the Army, why, I'm certain he's a good person. But, uh, I think I have something in common with him, but I think that, uh, our delegation goes down to the legislature, which it does annually, uh, can do more to change the direction of the city, uh, than has existed in the past. Uh, we've been sitting back there and been, been getting beat up on LGA, many other things. The one thing about the new governor is that, uh, he wants to make the state work. When he makes it work, it's going to be to the benefit of everybody. And, uh, I'm an optimist, I hope the group invites me down. Uh, we might have to, uh, keep us separate for a while, we might tell too many stories about each other, about the military, but this is a time to really get the, uh, thing in order like it should be. Uh, one thing I noticed in all of his releases, he likes to build highways and bridges. And, uh, I think it's important that we invite him up here, number one, to see the tech school. The tech school has got some unusual things happening. You should go up here, then I'll go down to Moorhead, but we should take him across the River in 32nd and the powers that be should invite the governor of North Dakota and they should shake hands and make a deal. Uh, it can be done. And, uh, the big thing is that it's the largest project left, uh, in, between the two cities that hasn't been handled. So, uh, we, uh, should spend some time on it. Uh, I have sent word that, uh, to the governor's office that, uh, we would like to meet with him when the delegation is down there. And when a delegation goes down to the legislature, they're not Republicans or Democrats, they're representing the city. The very fact that you have some of each is important. And I've told some of the people in the city council, I'd like to see new members go down. And every time, uh, council members are, are, uh, re-elected or for the first time, go down at, at least once during their term. The very fact that we bring down a substantial number, uh, indicates to most people in the legislature that we have some important business to discuss. Now, uh, we know a lot of them, and some of these people have been friends of mine for years. Uh, the mayor knows some, Mark Olsted knows some, some of the other people, I'm sure Mike knows some. But I'd just like to say one thing. I've, I've been in city government for a lot of years, I've been in state government, I've been in a lot of different things, and I want to thank, uh, the people of East Grand Forks for the opportunities you serve. And, uh, I will continue to help the city as much as I can, as, uh, and where I can. And by the way, I've got some pretty nice stablemates.
Mr. Demers?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Mr. Grassel.
Um, just like to thank both Henry and Mike for their service to the city, um, and especially Henry. Um, been around a long time. I've been trying to find that first piece of gravel that you threw on the ground when we started East Grand Forks, but I haven't found it. But we're looking for it, but we appreciate all that you did for us. That's it.
I have nothing for tonight.
Oh, I, I was with your dad and he was... Well, I was with your dad, and he was a good one, too. So it ran in the family.
Thanks for the tea there.
I just have one real quick thing, and I'll keep you informed as it gets closer. But I will be out on vacation for a couple of days in mid-January. I'll be going to Vegas for a personal conference, not city-related, but I can guarantee you that I will not be doing any gambling or getting into any trouble.
Mr. Galstad.
Nothing at this time. I just want to say thanks for everything, Henry.
Don't get to say this off. Mr. Bell, you have anything?
Thank you. I'm filling in for Steve today. He's off with his daughter's hockey game. I'd like to thank Mike and Henry also for all the years of working with you and everyone else. Appreciate everything you've done for us.
I apologize. I missed you, Mike.
We do have one more meeting. And I do have a farewell speech. Oh.
Can you bring my tissues tonight?
Oh, you have as long as Henry's.
Anything with department heads?
I just want to thank you all for your support and help in the budget. You know, this is the first time it's ever been signed or a resolution's been done, so thank you very much.
Not signed yet.
Well, I mean, it's not...
He's still sitting there. You're good. You're good.
So thank you very much.
Anything else from the department heads? Not, remember, we have a closed session after this downstairs. Entertainer motion adjourned.
So moved.
Moved by Demers.
Second.
Second by Grassl. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
O, same sign. Motion is carried. Means adjourned.
We'll go downstairs now, Henry.
Yeah.
Close call.
I'm going to DQ the pilot for the one about the suburban.